We're going to go ahead and get started if folks could take their seats, please. And I would like to call the September 4th, 2018 of the Whitefish City Council to order. And I would have to ask Steve Thompson to lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You probably saw that coming, right, Steve? We're going to move on to communications from the public. This is time set aside for the public to comment on items that are on the agenda but not advertised for a public hearing. And just a reminder, we do have three public hearings this evening. Anything you'd like to bring to the council's attention now would be your time. And just for the record, your name and address, please, when you approach the podium. Any public comment tonight?
My name is Casey Lewis, 414 Hazel Place, Whitefish. So I'd like to introduce myself to the council and mayor as one of the new co-chairs of Climate Smart Glacier Country. So I was talking to you today about the letter that we sent August 27th commending the city of Whitefish and Whitefish Schools on their adoption of the Whitefish Climate Action Plan. So within that letter, I'm just going to summarize our main action items. So we urge you to pursue the prior items in the implementation chapter in the Climate Action Plan. So one is the formation of the Climate Action Standing Committee by October, put forth in your goals. We suggest that that is a five-member citizens, five citizen members appointed by the council, and four staff representatives. The second item is the hiring of a Sustainability and Reliance Coordinator in fiscal year 2020. And the third item is the appointment of a city councillor to join Climate Smart Glacier Country's Board of Directors. With that, we just want to say thank you again for the adoption of the Climate Action Plan, and that is all.
Thanks very much, and thanks again for the letter. It was well crafted and a good guiding document to lead us forward related to our climate actions. Steve?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Steve Thompson, 545 Ramsey Avenue. I'm very pleased that Casey and Matt Foles have stepped up as new co-chairs of Climate Smart Glacier Country, and I thank them for being here tonight. I'm the founding chairman of the organization, but I'm resigning and moving to Butte, as some of you know. And I just wanted to reinforce another point that was in the letter. It's focused on, I encourage you to start planning now for creating a staff position in fiscal year 2020 that will focus on implementing the Climate Action Plan in all of its breadth. As Casey said, this should be, we're thinking of this as a Sustainability and Resilience Coordinator, because there's sort of two parts of the Climate Action Plan. One is to reduce our contributions, the greenhouse gas emissions from city operations, conserve energy, conserve water, and do our part. But then also, probably much more fundamentally, because it affects all of us very directly, rather than being part of a big international effort, just locally, we have to understand and prepare for what's happening. And once again, we've gone through another summer, a hot, dry, smoky summer, that is exactly what is projected in the Montana Climate Assessment that was put out by U of M and MSU last year. I envision the position of the Sustainability and Resilience Coordinator as somebody that's a generalist, that is able to communicate well, is able to write grant proposals, and is able to coordinate. We have a lot of specialists in this world, but not a lot of people that can do the generalist type of things of pulling the pieces together, knitting the pieces together. And I want to highlight in particular, and I don't see, is Joe here? No, I don't see Joe Page here. But Joe and I have been talking. I'm very concerned about the risk of catastrophic wildfire coming into Whitefish. After what we've seen happening in California the last couple of years, that is going to continue. Wildfires are not just something that are going to be in the fringe and that we have to be concerned about rural subdivisions and the wildland-urban interface. As Joe says, we are all downwind of an ember fire, you know, ember being sent a mile or two miles and coming inside city limits. Our Climate Action Plan, we spent quite a bit of time looking at this issue and working with the people in the wildfire community, talking to Joe Page, and we have quite a few recommendations on there. And I think that probably at least a third of this position, once it's created, should be detailed to work with Joe to implement those recommendations. Things like a network of shaded fuel breaks, working with the Whitefish Area Fire Safe Council. There is a whole list of things, which is much more than one-third position can handle, but working closely with the committee that thankfully you've committed to create, I think that we can tackle that. I would make that a high priority. Who knows when the conditions are going to be just right, but every year, the chances are higher and higher. And so I hope you make that a priority, and I hope that you establish that position in the FY 2020 budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks for all your efforts, and best of luck in Butte.
This is the last of us, I promise. Hi, Matt Foles, 221 Trumbull Lane. I just want to reiterate what Steve said. I work up in Glacier Park, and the fire that we've seen this season and last season, multimillion dollars of impact to our business and to our tourism industry, which is a huge component of what we do. And so I really want to reiterate that we make sure that's a focus of this position as a go-forward, that, you know, fire might be our new norm, but we have to be resilient, and we have to plan for it when we grow. And then I also just want to touch base and thank Steve again for his efforts. As you can see, it takes two of us to even consider doing what he's done. And so all of you on the council know what he's meant to the city, and I can't say enough, and I only have one and a half minutes now, but he's done a great job for the city and this community, and so he should be commended, but hopefully we can take the things that he has done and accomplished and keep that moving forward.
Thanks, Matt. Further public comment tonight? Sir?
As you guys noticed. Anyway, I'm Charles Overcast. I live at 124 Summers Avenue, Whitefish, Montana. September 2018, about four months ago, I went to a show-me with the DNRC at Beaver Trailhead, and they walked me through a little bit. We didn't do much, but we walked through a little areas up there to show us what they had in mind for logging, et cetera, along the trails and stuff. It's a real shame. Not they have to log at once, you know. I've been in there a ton of times. Now they're going back and cutting along the trail as well. So they told me that, I'm not going to give any names, they told me that they needed to cut more big trees in order to give shade, or to take, give sunlight to the small trees. And they're going to leave four bigger trees, I guess, about like this large per acre. I was astounded. I'm going, well, at least you're being frank with me. And they also told me that in the past, they basically logged over the hill where you couldn't see it. But now, they've run out of trees, so they've got to come along the road. And that's where Beaver Lake Road comes into play, so they're going to log along there. It's going to cause a lot of, I'd say angst, but I was the only one there besides Heidi. Maybe there was one guy that lived at Beaver Lake or something. But I was the only one that even bothered to show up. I guess this is one of the only times I've shown up. But I thought that Beaver Lake was pretty important to this community, and the proximity of cutting that much tree, and that's close of an area to Whitefish, only causes more winds and causes the sun to hit the earth more, so you're drying it out more. I thought basically that Whitefish, as a community, was interested in climate change and leaving shade trees. I see the opposite. They've run out of trees, and they said so much, that this is not going to be cost-effective because they have to search for trees. So that means they have to go 10, 12 blocks, different ones, to get where they want enough trees are at. If you've been up in the Beaver Lake area, you know there's not many trees there now. There's a couple areas that, but what are the deer going to do to keep warm and stuff? What's the wildlife? I don't hear anything about wildlife. I'm interested, and I will be interested, and I will be watching if you guys, you guys are pretty much connected to this through the trail system. It's taken Skiles completely out there. It's a mess. It's a mess most everywhere except for the private land. So I'm just going to give it some thought, and I don't know what you can do against the state, but you could at least put an opinion in. And I liked your article in the paper where you said, "This is about Whitefish." That's what brought me here tonight. It was the only time I ever heard lately, "This is about Whitefish." This is about Whitefish. It's about Whitefish Lake. There's logging going up all the way to Upper Whitefish Lake. You know that. I guess there was a deal made, I didn't get in on it. But it can't be just for tourism around here. There's other people that live here and that are trying to protect areas somewhat. I mean, it's late. Thank you.
I normally don't respond to public comment, but I will briefly to Charles' point. As part of our, because we do hold public recreation use easements and licenses within the state lands, I think we're provided 30-day advance notice of the formal public scoping period. We were provided notice of this timber sale, Charles and others that are interested, and the city did formally provide comments related to mitigations for the trail system, including the trailheads, buffers, and setbacks from the primary trails, how skid trails and road designs would be complimentary and basically temporary-type construction and obliterated following construction. Again, all in efforts to try to mitigate the impact the sale could potentially have on our assets on state lands. So we'll continue to follow that timber sale and stay engaged both with the DNRC as well as Whitefish Legacy Partners. So we'll keep an eye on that for sure. Further public comment tonight? Go ahead and close the public comment period, but we'll stay with the audience. Any volunteer board reports from the audience? How about the council? Richard?
No, but I would like a point of personal preference.
Please.
Privilege, I mean. While he's still in the audience, I'd like to thank, personally thank Steve Thompson for all of his hard work and dedication on the Climate Action Plan and with Climate Smart Glacier Country. I think without Steve's leadership, your leadership, Steve, we would not have reached a document and put together a document of such high quality. So I want to say thank you very much for all of your efforts and dedication to doing the right thing to improve our environment. Thanks.
Well said, Richard. Thank you. Volunteer board reports tonight from the council. Not seeing any, we'll move on to item five, which is our consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the August 20th, 2018 meeting minutes, or can I have a motion for adoption? Frank?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councillor Hennan. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Michelle? We'll move on to item six. We have three public hearings this evening. Item D has been postponed to the September 17th meeting pursuant to the request of Homeward. We'll begin with item 6A, which is a request by Carolina Holmes for a preliminary plat in order to develop a nine-lot subdivision, Zone WR2, which is our two-family residential district located along Whitefish Avenue and can be legally described as tract one in Section 1 Township 30 North Range 22 West, Flathead County, Montana. Bailey?
Good evening. So the applicant is proposing a nine-lot residential subdivision on a total of .998 acres. Gross density for the subdivision would be 9.018 dwelling units per acre, as it's almost an acre. The lots will range between approximately .1 acres and .3 acres in size. The lots will each have frontage and driveways along Whitefish Avenue, which is a city-maintained street. The subdivision will be required to provide a parkland cash-in-lieu dedication, as the required amount is not large enough for a land dedication, and they are not asking for any subdivision variances with the proposal. So the subject property is currently undeveloped. It is Zone WR2, which is our two-family residential district. If you remember, it used to be a split zoning designation, and they came in a couple months ago and asked for it to be all rezoned to one zone completely. Adjacent land uses, mostly residential, within commercial along the south with the new Marriott, and then also to the north, the property is, northern property is the parking lot for the mall at the back. So I'm trying to fix the microphone. So the property project will comply, excuse me, it will be connected to city services. I start reading ahead, and then I get lost. We did mail a notice to the adjacent landowners. Because it's a major subdivision, it's 300 feet around the subject parcel, and that was on July 25th. We did place a sign on the property and notified advisory agencies. We also placed a legal in the Whitefish Pilot on August 1st. When I wrote the staff report, I had three public comments that had been received, which were in opposition to the proposal. They had concerns regarding the number of units compared to the size of the property, lack of parking within the development, increased density in the surrounding areas. And then I did receive one comment after the planning board packet was done, but before the planning board meeting, and that also is attached as part of your packet. And that was, again, in opposition, and they wanted, their concerns were more with the development and the effects on our current sewer, or, excuse me, our current water treatment plant? Sewer plant.
Base water.
Sorry. There you go. Again, I'm mixing my terms up. They wanted it to, any development to be postponed until the upgrades were completed on the, to the plant, so. So just some highlights of the criteria. The fire marshal has reviewed the project. There are existing hydrants in the area that can accommodate the new construction. Additionally, he recommends residential sprinkler systems are encouraged. They're not a requirement, so it's not a condition, but just based off of the number of units and the close proximity to one another, he would recommend those, but it's not a requirement. As I said, the lots will be accessed off of Whitefish Avenue, which is a paved city-maintained street. There is no internal subdivision road as part of the proposal. Due to the size of the lots, shared driveways would be recommended, just based off of the distances between driveways, and if they might be able to accommodate it, but we'd prefer to see shared driveways, as that would reduce the number of individuals that would be potentially backing out onto the street. Frontage improvements along Whitefish Avenue for the entire length of the property are required as a condition of approval, and that does include streetlights, sidewalks, and boulevard street trees. And any proposed improvements would be submitted to the Public Works Department for approval. The proposed subdivision would generate approximately 90 total daily trips. No traffic impact study is required, as it's less than our 200-trip threshold. Since the property fronts along Whitefish Avenue, it's north of the newly constructed Acres Lane, so traffic impacts are anticipated to be adequately addressed with that new, the new road coming through. There are no mapped crucial wildlife habitat. The proposed subdivision, the lots will range in size from approximately 3,600 square feet, which is the minimum standard for a townhouse lot, up to approximately 11,000 square feet, with the one single-family lot meeting our 6,000-square-foot requirement. And this will allow the preservation of open space within the subdivision as well. The property is adjacent to the existing Storm Pond, which is adjacent to the Mountain Mall. There is a dedicated 20-foot-wide drainage easement that is located at the northern part of the property. I had the Google Earth image just to give you reference of where it was. But you might not be able to see it. It's kind of light up at the top. But there is a dedicated 20-foot-wide drainage easement that's at the northern end of the property, which crosses through the property and extends into the Rivers Edge subdivision. And that is the outlet overflow for the Storm Pond at the Mountain Mall. So they are not proposing any changes to the easement. The applicant is proposing to split the easement between two lots, and because of that, that is why the single-family lot will be located at the north, because they cannot build across that easement. So the single-family lot is lot number one at the north, and most people think it's the lot to the south, but that is just a townhouse lot. It's just based off of the shape of the property, kind of forces it that way. They will be required to submit a preliminary drainage report to the Public Works Department prior to final plat approval. The project does propose to extend city water to each lot. Currently, water is located along Whitefish Avenue, so they will design and construct to city specifications for each individual lot. They are also proposing to utilize the city sewer system. There is an existing sewer line that's located along the newly constructed Acres Lane. They will be required to extend a new sewer main from Acres Lane to the subject property, and then extend individual sewer lines to each individual lot. And all of those will be designed and constructed to city specifications as well. As I mentioned, frontage improvements will be required along Whitefish Avenue, as if you've been out there, there's no sidewalks on that side of the street. So all of those requirements will need to be met. And additionally, we are requiring them to provide a 10-foot easement on the face of the plat along the front of each lot for all dry utilities, so electric, gas, those types of things as well. According to our subdivision regulations, the proposed subdivision is required to provide parkland dedication based on the size of the lots. The total amount of parkland required is a little over 4,700 square feet. Since it's less than our 10,000-square-foot threshold, the applicant is required to pay cash-in-lieu of parkland at the time of final plat. So that total amount will be calculated based off of the state appraised value at the time they come in for final plat. We don't put an amount specifically in the report because it could fluctuate up and down depending on what happens in the next couple of years. The growth policy does identify the parcel as urban based on our future land use map, and this designation does comply with the WR2 standards. The subject property, it is within our draft Highway 93 corridor plan boundary, but at this time, the plan is still in its preliminary stages, so there's no draft document to see if there's any comments or thoughts about this property, but it is within that boundary as well. So, let me get back to my, I've got lots of notes. So staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to 16 conditions. The Whitefish Planning Board met on August 16th and considered their request. The applicant spoke at that hearing and addressed a number of comments. Two other members of the public spoke at the hearing, and I did attach the draft minutes as part of the packet. And Richard had asked a couple of questions during the planning board meeting that I didn't have answers for at that time, so I just wanted to go over those answers for him and for you all as well. The first one was, he asked if there had been any calculation of the cumulative effects by adding 90 trips per day to the additional trips that have been created. I talked with Craig at length about this issue. I read both of the Eagle Lake TIS and the Riverview Meadows, or the MKTIS, as well. They do, both of them include a number of larger developments in making their recommendations and what's going on in the area and the traffic that might be associated with that. And they actually included two that did not happen. One of them was that Commonwealth Apartment project that was going to be, I think it's actually where the Marriott is now, that didn't go through. And then also the Whitefish 57 Sub area plan, that was denied recently. Eagle Lake was the most recent, and just to put it into comparison, that project, if you remember, it was 72 condo units, so up to 1,900 vehicle trips, whereas this one is 90-vehicle trips. So that's just to give the comparison between the two, the scale of the two projects. The main issue is, we can't require a TIS for this project. It's under our threshold. We'd have to actually change our requirement in our subdivision regulations to require a TIS. So as far as cumulative effects of it, there's not, there wouldn't be a way to know that other than looking at the past TIS that have been, that did include projects that were a much larger scale compared to this one. The next question Richard had was about requiring street trees to be installed at final plat, and maybe if they would do a cash-in-lieu, or due to potential driveway locations and putting trees in, and then having people end up ripping them out because of that. So our subdivision regulations do permit the applicant to create an agreement with the city at the time of final plat for cash-in-lieu of the street trees. So it's up to the developer if they choose to do that, or they have to install the trees at that time. And I chatted with Wendy, and we've only actually had one subdivision that has asked to do that, that development. So it's in there, it's been in there for a number of years, and most people just choose to do it themselves instead of doing that. So there was no, I'm not recommending any change to, it was condition number seven regarding the street trees. And then the last comment was, or question was about sufficient width on Whitefish Avenue to allow for on-street parking. And again, I talked with Craig for length about that. City council could choose to make that street no parking, mainly when it becomes a more traveled street, when it connects, you know, it's proposed to connect theoretically all the way down to GP Road, I mean, eventually. So when it got to be a heavily traveled road, that is something that council could decide. It's not something that I can require or as part of a condition of the subdivision. But he also mentioned that the distances between future driveways will drastically impact parking on the street. Obviously, people can't park, you know, in front of someone's driveway, so depending on where those locations, that may just limit naturally where people park and if there is parking available on the street. So, and I think those were the questions that mainly came up. So as I said, we are recommending approval of the application. The planning board did recommend approval on a five-to-two vote, and they did adopt the staff report and findings of fact that I provided. And I'm happy to answer questions, or I know the applicant is present as well, if you have any questions for them, too.
Thanks, Bailey. We'll start with Frank.
Just because they're both timely, are there landscaping requirements for this development?
So landscaping is exempt for single-family duplex and triplex, I believe? I'd have to look at it, but I definitely know single-family is exempt from landscaping requirements.
Right.
And I can pull my zoning book out if you wanted me to, and I can look at it. But I'm pretty sure it's up to a triplex is exempt from landscaping requirements.
Which we hope to fix, I hope, someone. And do these have to go through architectural review?
The townhouse as well, yes. Anything over single-family requires architectural view. So they'll look at scale, massing, the materials, things like that.
Further questions for Bailey? Thanks, Bailey.
Okay.
Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing, and we'll hold that public hearing now on what will be a nine-lot subdivision. And I would invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to first approach the council if you'd like, and name and address for the record, please, if you're in the audience. I figured it was one of the three of you.
Hi, my name is Keith Schneider. I'm with Strongway, and the applicant for the preliminary plat and representing Carolina Holmes, two representatives. First of all, I'd just like to thank council for supporting an issue that we had previously, acquiring the property was the split zoning. We had worked a lot with the seller of that property to try to find amenable We had worked a lot with the seller of that property to try to find a amenable solution to a, you know, inadequate or inappropriate development on that parcel. And with split zoning, we just encountered numerous changes, you know, numerous issues and challenges that we just couldn't overcome. We're really pleased that council allowed the zoning to go forward, to allow the town housing. We think it's contextually very appropriate, and we're really excited about that opportunity. So want to thank council for supporting that opportunity to do that, so we clarify that. And we're here to answer any questions and address anything you may have concerns with. So, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Public comment tonight on this topic? Any public comment? Not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Richard?
Bailey, I don't know how we want to do this, maybe after a motion, but I'm really concerned about the street trees and final plat. If you look what happened at the end of Texas, we've got a whole subdivision out there with almost every single one of those trees has a dead top, because they never got watered after final plat. They put the trees in the ground, and we have dead trees. And so I would like, is it, can I go ahead once there's a motion and amend number seven to require that the street trees be put in when construction of the dwelling is complete? Or would the proponent be willing to do that, so that you don't have all these dead trees in your boulevard?
I was going to say, I mean, I think if the applicant is willing to do that, I don't know if we can necessarily require them to do that, because it's an option in our zoning. I mean, they have to do it. Trees have to go in. We just give it as an option that they can pay. It's basically cash-in lieu tree. So they'd be giving us what the cost is at the time they come into final plat, similar to parkland. And I think we add like 20% for, I believe is what I read in there when I was looking it up. It's like a 20% markup for us having to go out and do it at later time. So I would assume as long as the applicant is willing to have that condition, or they're in agreement to that. But I don't know if we can necessarily require, or we can say, "You will do that," since it's an option. I mean, they, does that mean, it's like, it's like I look at it, like our parkland, we say, "Here's our threshold. If you're less than this, you will do cash-in lieu." But for our street trees, we don't really have that. We say, "Well, you have to plant them, but you also could do cash-in lieu if you wanted to." But if the applicant's willing, then I think we could change the condition, so.
Maybe I could hear from the applicant here in a moment. I saw Frank had his hand up, some sort of a question.
Frank?
Bailey, I don't think Richard's question is whether or not, is whether or not we can require cash-in lieu. The condition would be, "Street trees shall not be planted until and shall be planted upon construction of each dwelling on the lots."
But that's the problem, is that final plat, how do we show that they have met that condition? Because once final plat is created, the lots are sold and they go to someone else. So what's our hook to make the property owner who didn't do the subdivision, and that would be, that would be a cost that the developer is supposed to incur? What, you know, basically, the developer isn't having to pay for those frontage improvements. Now it goes to the property owner that buys it, and that would, that would be my only concern, is what's that hook to get it, you know, that versus as a condition of final plat? Unless maybe Angie has any thoughts too, or Dave as well?
Angie? I'm going to throw my thing there. You know, I don't have any thoughts, other than I think Bailey's right. Like, what is, how do we force them to do that? If they do cash-in lieu and they don't do it, we take the cash-in lieu and we do it, plus the markup. But I don't know. I mean, once final plat's approved, how do we, what's our hook? How do we get them to do it if they decide they don't want to do it? So, I mean, I think your options are, unless they're willing to stipulate to it, which in which case, that's fine. But, I mean, if you're going to take cash-in lieu, at least we have something if they ultimately get final plat and decide that they don't wish to put in the trees.
Richard?
How would we stipulate that? From where I'm sitting?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think the applicant could stipulate to that, but I'd be a lot more comfortable taking some cash-in lieu, so ultimately, okay, so.
So if I make a motion, how would I, help me with language to require the cash-in lieu, or that they would stipulate to cash-in lieu?
Well, I think if they want to stipulate on the record, that they're fine with cash-in lieu. There you go.
So I would ask, we would ask them to come forward now?
Yeah. And I would almost maybe recommend a new condition that just, you know, something like a condition 17 that just says, like, maybe not changing condition seven, because that's requiring frontage improvements and saying, "You will do streetlights, you will do street trees." But maybe a new condition that just says, "Street trees will be provided as cash-in lieu at the time of final plat," instead of, you know, something like that, so.
Just for the record, your name and address, please.
So good evening, my name's Gary Cooper, and we're happy to consent to that new proposal, cash-in lieu for the trees. We want them inevitably at the end to be functioning good, healthy trees as well, so.
Thank you. Richard, motion?
Yes, I think I can do that now. I'll move to approve the request by Carolina Holmes for preliminary plat in order to develop a nine-lot subdivision, Zone WR2, two-family residential district located along Whitefish Avenue, and can be legally described as Track 1, Section, Township, Section 1, Township 30, Range 22 North, or 22 West, yada, yada. Subject 2, or do you want the condition 17 separate?
You can include it as part of your primary motion.
Including condition 17, that street trees shall be provided as cash-in lieu at the time of final plat.
Thank you. Richard, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Hartman. Further discussion on the motion?
This is ancillary, my discussion is ancillary to the motion itself, but I think it's germane, and that is that, in riding my bike along Acres Street, is it Street or Avenue?
Lane.
Lane, of course. On Acres Lane today, there is no sidewalk on the north side. There is a wide parking lane on the south side, but I'm hopeful that, at the time that this development comes around, that we can eliminate parking on both sides, because the developments in that area all require parking, and then can construct, or at least have painted bike lanes along Acres, so we can move both adults and children out of all of those subdivisions and back out onto the Highway 93, which is, that is a combined bike pit path off of the highway. I just want that to be part of the record, so Craig can have, get out his paint gun and paint those stripes and little bicycles and things.
Thank you, Richard. Further comment on the motion or discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously as well. Michelle, thanks, gentlemen. Good luck with your project. We will move on to item 6B, which will be ordinance 18-28, an ordinance rezoning approximately .22 acres of land located at 2030 Highway 93 West in Section 35, Township 31 North, Range 22 West in Flathead County, Montana, from County R1, which is the former suburban residential district, to our own Whitefish WSR suburban residential district, and adopting findings with respect to such rezone, and this will be on a first reading. Bailey?
Okay. So the city is requesting the zone change on one parcel from, as the mayor stated, County R1 suburban residential to the city's WSR, which is our suburban residential district. It's located along the north side of Highway 93 West. It is located within city limits. The purpose of rezoning the property is due to the adoption of Resolution 1823, which annexed the property into the Whitefish city limits on July 2nd. Since it's now within city limits, we have to change the zoning from a county zoning to the city zoning. So the purpose of the WSR is intended for single-family homes. I did do a comparison between the WSR and the R1 zoning in my staff report. The subject property totals approximately .22 acres in size. It's currently developed with a residential dwelling. It is identified as suburban residential in our city growth policy, future land use map, and the zoning districts that correspond to that suburban residential include the WCR, WER, and the WSR. It is surrounded by either residential properties or vacant properties along the highway. We did mail a notice to the adjacent landowners within 150 feet on July 25th. We noticed advisory agencies, and we did place a legal in the paper. I've had no comments on this project at all. So just kind of some highlights, as I said, the growth policy does designate the parcel as suburban residential, and that does correspond to the proposed WSR. The property is located within the Highway 93 West corridor plan boundary. This was adopted by the city council as an amendment to their growth policy in 2015. The subject property was included as part of the west residential area. The plan identified the existing zoning as appropriate and recommended no change to the existing growth policy designation. So it is compliant with the Highway 93 West plan that's been adopted. It's served by the city fire and police departments. Any development standards will be required to meet city requirements for roadway width and fire department standards at the time of development. Public water service is available along Highway 93 West, adjacent to the property. Extensions to the property and surrounding area were included as part of the Highway 93 West road construction that was completed a few years ago. Public sewer, however, is not available to the subject property and is not located along the highway. It actually ends at the intersection of Highway 93 and State Park Road, surprisingly enough. This area is included in our city's extension of services plan, so at the time of future development and as the corridor develops, likely that service will continue to extend as well. Or if systems out there fail, current septic systems fail, so. Okay, I'm trying to hit the highlights, because you guys, I know, have read the packet and know the criteria, so I'm trying not to make it go too long. So staff is recommending approval of the proposed rezone. The Planning Board met on August 16th and considered their request. There were no members of the public that spoke at the hearing. I did attach the draft minutes as part of the packet. And following the hearing, the Planning Board did recommend approval unanimously of the proposal. So I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey on her staff report?
Okay.
Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be ordinance 18-28. We'll hold that public hearing now. Anyone here wishing to provide public testimony on this item?
No comments on this, sorry.
Am I looking at you? No. I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to council for a motion. Andy?
I would move to approve WZC 18-06, adopting the findings of fact, staff report is recommended to us by our planning board from their August 16, 2018 meeting, and adopt ordinance number 18-28 on a first reading.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that's unanimous as well. And we'll move on to item 6C, which again will be our own ordinance 18-29, an ordinance rezoning approximately 1.3 acres of unaddressed land along State Park Road and Salmon Run, known as lots 2, 3, and 5 of the amended plat of lots 1 through 4, 6 through 8, and 14 through 26, and Block 2 of Patton's subdivision located in Section 26. Township 31 North, Range 22 West in Flathead County, Montana, from County R4, which is their two-family residential, to our own Whitefish WR2, our equivalent two-family residential district, and adopting findings with respect to such rezone on a first reading. Bailey?
Okay. So first, I would just like to apologize, because you have a copy of the ordinance in front of you this evening. When I sent my packet to Michelle, I sent her my planning board packet and not my updated council packet. So I apologize that the ordinance, we just figured it out tonight, what was going on. So the ordinance, it wasn't included. My transmittal letter was included as part of the manager's report, but it wasn't, it wasn't listed, and then the draft minutes to the planning board, or from the planning board meeting, weren't in there. So you do have the ordinance in front of you this evening, just sorry about that. So the city is requesting a zone change on three parcels. It's from County R4, which is their two-family residential, to RWR2, which is our two-family residential district. They're located along the west side of State Park Road and the east side of Salmon Run, north of Lake Park Lane. The purpose of rezoning the property is due to adoption of Resolution 1825, which annexed them into the Whitefish city limits on July 16th, and therefore, we have to change it to a city designation instead of the county designation. The WR2 district is intended for residential purposes to serve one-family and two-family homes. I did do a comparison in my staff report between the WR2 proposed zoning and the current County R4 zoning. The property, the subject properties are currently vacant. The growth policy does identify this area as urban in our future land use map, and that designation does include the WLRR1 and our WR2 zoning. It's surrounded by residential uses other than to the west, which is currently vacant at this time as well, and that's also in the county at this time. We did mail a notice to the adjacent landowners within 150 feet of the parcel on July 25th. We also noticed advisory agencies and placed a legal in the paper. I've had no public comments submitted on this proposal as well. So as I said, the growth policy does designate the parcel as urban, which is compliant, or the proposed change to WR2 is consistent with that urban designation. Any future development standards will be required to meet city requirements for road width, fire department standards, building as well. Public services and utilities are available along State Park Road, adjacent to the subject properties. City water has been partially extended along Lake Park Lane to the south, and the majority of homes in the area are served by individual septic and well systems. Again, the area is included as part of our city's extension of services plan, and services will be extended further as further development occurs, or as those systems do end up failing over time, if they fail over time. Any future construction will be required to come into conformance with the building code, as well as the zoning requires setbacks, maximum building heights, and law coverage, and those would be looked at at the time of development or building permit. The proposed zone change from the County R4 to the city WR2, that is our most equivalent zone, so the uses are the most similar between the two zoning districts. And the character of the district is predominantly single-family, and the lot sizes would be compatible, and the proposed zoning, as I said, would be the most equivalent. So, the staff is recommending approval of the request. The Whitefish Planning Board met on August 16th and considered their request. There were no members that spoke at the public hearing, and I would have attached the minutes to the packet, but that didn't make it there, so. But the Planning Board did recommend approval unanimously to their request, and I'm happy to answer more questions.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey on her staff report or the ordinance? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be ordinance 18-29. We'll hold that public hearing now. Anyone wishing to provide testimony? Not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion. Andy?
I guess I'll do it again. I would move that we approve WZC 18-07, findings of fact, relative staff report, as recommended to us by the planning board, and adopt our ordinance 18-29, correct?
Correct.
On a first reading.
Thanks, Andy. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Hennan. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and the motion carries unanimously. Michelle, thanks, Bailey. And we'll move on to item 7, communications from Craig Workman, our Public Works Director. We have item A. Enclosed in the packet is the council order to begin the utility rate hearing process consistent with 69-7-111, Montana Code annotated, which would include ordering a public hearing on October 1st, 2018, to consider the proposed rate increases. Craig?
Thank you very much. This is actually a joint report between the Public Works Department and the Finance Department, so you may hear Dana jumping in if I get wildly out of track or off-track. We like to refer to ourselves as Fine Pub, so it's the Fine Pub Department. The city completed a utility rates study in 2015 with AE2S, which is recommended by The city completed a utility rate study in 2015 with AE2S, which is recommended by most... I don't know who actually recommends it, but it's definitely something that should be done by wastewater and water utilities. Anytime a considerable project is being considered, or every three to five years. So, we... the city of Whitefish met both of those criteria back in 2015 and contracted with AE2S to perform that rate study. The first rate increase as a result of that study went into effect in October of 2016, and the study itself laid out a pretty specific path of rate increases to get to our goals. So, what we have tonight is really just the beginning stages of the process to begin the next rate increase, which will increase rates in the 2019 fiscal year. You guys have those rates in your packet. They're broken down and highlighted in red, or boxed out in red, so you guys can see them. In order to move forward with this order, MCA lays out a very specific path of publication. So, it is the Public Works and the Finance Department's recommendation that we move forward with this rate increase, that council order the public hearing, and we follow the publication schedule as laid out in my staff report. That would be a series of three publications, the first being Wednesday, September 12th, Wednesday, September 19th, and Wednesday, September 26th, for the rate hearing to take place on October 1st, 2018.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig on his staff report? Frank?
Craig, my mind begins to fade over time, as most of us do, but I thought when we approved that rate study and we went through the whole routine, we approved a process for raising rates consistent with the requirements or the recommendations we got from it at that time that was going to take place over several years. So, we just have to go back every year and by statute have to, as opposed to doing it, okay, we're going to raise it this much this year, this year, and this year, as we proposed and decided back then? We have to do it on an annualized basis?
Correct, yes. The report laid out for water, I believe, a five-year rate increase schedule, and for wastewater, a 10-year rate increase schedule to meet the goals in the plan.
Thank you. Further questions for Craig? Just before we have a motion, Craig, I was curious for the wastewater rate increases on those tables. Where we have the service class designations, would it be possible when we do our publications to include a map so folks can cross-reference their service class or category with the proposed rate increase?
Yeah, what we've done in the past, there will be a mass mailing that goes out to every customer, either by regular mail or email, depending on how you get your bill, that lays out the specifics of the rate increase, and it also directs people to a very specific page on the city's website where we have things like maps for service classes in the wastewater structure, pressure zones in the water structure, things along those lines. So, we try and make that information as readily available as possible. It's kind of difficult to mail all of those things, or include all of those things with the specific mailing, but we do create a webpage specific to the rate increase that people can go right to.
Okay, great. Thank you. With that said, I'll take a motion. Ryan?
I would move to begin the utility rate hearing process consistent with Montana Code annotated 69-7-111.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second to the motion?
I'm Andy, second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Michelle, thanks, Craig. We'll move on to Item 8. We have Adam's written report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Adam from the council? Adam, anything to report on that's not included in the packet?
Yeah, I think the only thing I wanted to... I sent an email out, but I might want to do it publicly, that we now have four electric vehicle charging stations in the parking garage, two in the covered and two in the uncovered, and so we do have them signed as only for electric vehicles. So, we're hoping to... that this will be an incentive for people to maybe start acquiring electric vehicles. Right now, the electricity to them is free as Climate Glacier Smart is going to be footing the bill for the first year or two, so we'll kind of see how that goes, but my feeling is it's going to take a little bit to catch on. We're going to do some things to get the word out, press release and whatnot, and hopefully we can start to encourage some people to do that. So, you will have to have a lease during lease hours, but above and beyond that, you don't have to pay for anything else. So, if you have a lease, you can be in there and park in those spots. If you have a lease and you don't have an electric vehicle, you are not allowed to park in those spots. Outside of lease hours, if you have an electric vehicle, you can park in those spots, and again, if you do not have an electric vehicle, you cannot park in those spots. So, when we get to farmers' markets nights, they may be available, but nevertheless, we're trying to encourage people to be more environmentally conscious. This is one of the things that was discussed in the climate action plan as well, so we're pleased to have that in place.
Great. Thanks, Adam.
Are we going to have a press release to that effect in the pilot?
Yes, yeah.
Just wanted to highlight an item that's included in Adam's manager's report, but we do have our first kickoff meeting to the design process for the snow lot scheduled for this Thursday, September 6th, starting at 6:00 PM here in the council chamber, so we certainly invite the residents of the snow lot area and residents in town in general who are interested in this project to certainly attend, and that'll be followed up with two design shret meetings on September 19th and September 20th at 5:30, both in the city hall lobby downstairs, excuse me. We'll move on to communications from mayor and city councilors. Who would like to begin? Melissa?
I was just taking off my glasses. No comments tonight.
Thank you. Frank?
Nothing for me this evening?
Thank you, Frank. Ryan?
No comment.
Thanks, Ryan. Andy?
Just one suggestion. Next time we have the architecture review committee in, let's buy more pizza.
Yeah.
Those are Chow hounds.
Who'd have thought?
Who'd have thought? I know, it's like, wow.
It's gone.
That's the only comment I have.
Thanks, Andy. Richard?
I have a bit of a list. I hope folks are okay with this. I had a comment from a constituent about parking and changes in use of a residence at 224 Summers, and apparently we're working on that, but that... I'd like some information at some point to get back to that constituent, and so, Dave, I'm happy to have that discussion with you as soon as possible. But while I was riding around on my bicycle checking out 224 Summers, I rode by 328 Calisbell, and there's... the side yard of that building looks like it's being used as a parking lot for at least a half a dozen vehicles on the grass. It's unimproved, and cars are all just stacked in there, and I think that that's probably worth taking a look at. The... I had another comment from a constituent who lives on Dakota. I've discussed this with Chief Dial, and I have sent a message to the constituent to see if we can't together figure out what the actual speeds are on Dakota at the times of greatest concern, so that they are aware and we are all aware of the status and what really the speeds are. Is it possible to add the tree language so that we don't have to go through the peregrinations that we just went through with regards to boulevard trees as part of, I don't know, the tree committee making a recommendation, but I just... every time I see dead boulevard trees or abused boulevard trees, I think that we ought to be able to do something a little better than what we're doing to improve those. And finally, maybe not finally, but close to it, the importance of the climate action plan implementation. I think Steve made a very good point, and I think we need to take Steve Thompson's admonitions and his letter seriously and move forward with all deliberate speed on implementation of the CAP and its recommendations.
Thank you, Richard. Is there a schedule that we've developed for creating that steering committee?
Just this fall, yeah. Our goal is to start...
So, it's on your to-do list?
Yep, we wanted to bring the new sustainability coordinator in because they're going to kind of be the head of things.
Okay.
And I believe she starts soon.
Great. Thanks, Adam.
I have just a couple things. I'm all for our special events and our triathlons that run through town every summer, but there was one held about five or six weeks ago, and the paint markings are still all around town on Dakota and around Idaho and down at City Beach, and it's obviously not water-soluble paint, at least as far as I can tell. This has been brought up on numerous occasions over the years. I don't know if it's something we can flag when a special event permit does come into the city, but it's been five or six weeks now, and we still have paint everywhere in that section of town, and, you know, this is public infrastructure that the public pays for, and I don't believe that we should have paint markings and quote graffiti on our public right-of-ways and streets for this length of time following a special event. It's been addressed in the past, but evidently they didn't use the appropriate paint this go-around.
Did we know which run that is?
It was four or five weeks ago. It began and ended at City Beach. Andy and I were launching his dock the same day the race was going on, and that had to be five or six weeks ago, so...
Okay.
If you could follow up, I'd appreciate it. I know in the past, this has been an issue that's been discussed, and there are alternatives type paint products that basically are water-soluble or just basically weather away in a matter of days.
Yeah, and I've seen it in some of our requirements when we do the event permits.
Right.
So, I'm surprised this one got through, but I'll follow up on this one.
Thank you. Richard?
I'll just add to that. Maybe we could also get them to do spell check. That's not how you spell straight, but anyway, the Two Bear Marathon, half marathon, and Kids Fund 5K is also coming up, and it's going to be a new course through some city streets, and so maybe they need to be alerted to that as well.
Thank you, Richard.
My last point, Craig, I was dropping my bike off at the bike shop today, and I... great job on the Central Avenue project. I was curious what the plan is. You mentioned it during our work session for the median between 4th and 5th Street, and do we have irrigation plumbed for that median?
There is not irrigation... there was not irrigation installed as part of that project in the median. We did run a water line out to the median, so there's water available, but in an effort to, you know, kind of fall in line with our climate action plan, we're working with forest restoration right now on a lower-impact, less-water-demanding irrigation plan for that median, which we expect to have installed this fall.
What type of landscaping plan are you guys considering for that median?
It'll be a mixture of native and, you know, some non-native species, but the goal is to try and reduce the amount of irrigated turf.
Okay.
So, there may be some grass or some irrigated grass in that landscape plan. We haven't reviewed the plan yet. We're... we expect to have that from... for restoration in the next two weeks.
Okay, so we're not considering like a gravel fill as a replacement to sod or anything like that, are we? Like the 93 West medians?
There will likely be some, you know, some crushed granite or mulch or other types of ground cover as part of the landscape plan, but it won't be a...
Continuous island of...
...band of rock.
Okay, great. Just wanted to check in on that. Anything further from the council tonight? How about staff? Did you guys receive adequate direction during the work session to move that process forward? And any additional feedback needed from the regular meeting tonight? Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
John, you want this back?